I'd like to call this board meeting to order. And first order is Roquan, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
I'd like to lead us, please. I'd like to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We have recognition of visitors and most of us are normal, but Patty, I think this is your first meeting with us and we'd like to wel- is it? In a long time, so we'd like to welcome you here from the A D C and would you like to have any remarks to start? If not, we'll just keep going. You guys are familiar with Patty, she's with our A D C and as you can tell, we're starting to work more and more with our local A D C and that is a great thing. Thank you for being here. First hearing of the public.
Good afternoon. I'm John Glorioso. Born, raised here in Lorain, gone to school here, taught, was in your position for four years, wife taught for 47, daughters teaching for 22, two grandchildren that were in school here. As of this past week, the reason I'm speaking today is on their behalf. They've asked not to come back. They had an absentee problem based on the power school. Nathan had 100 and some days supposedly absent. I pick him up in Amherst every morning at 6:00, bring him to our house, has breakfast, and drop him off here at Lorain High. I do the same with Jalen at 8:00 or 8:30 and the same with him. He has missed more days than Nathan, but I know for sure what Nathan's are because I bring him directly to the doors every morning. He had a problem with not using his pass, so they counted him absent every day. Well, if he went, if you would go to any of the teachers, and which we did, and contacted them and said, "Was Nathan in the building today?" Well, of course he was. He's here every day. But yet, we get a phone call every morning, his mother and us as grandparents, get a phone call on the same days that they count him absent and Nathan's sitting in the classroom. If you would ask any of their teachers, you would find the same. Well, he was not, he got a letter this week and then a phone call followed saying that they have to go back to their home school. They've never been in Amherst schools. They happen to live in Amherst, but they've gone to school here in Lorain since they were in kindergarten, both of them. Now, in his junior year, he's asked to leave and go to Amherst, of which he knows no one there. He only lives one block from Amherst High School, but he does not want to go to Amherst High School. He wants to finish and graduate with his friends, of whom he went to school with all of his life. The young one is only, is going to sixth grade and now he's asked also to not return. You know, I'm not sure what the problem is and they said it's not fixable when my daughter talked with someone at the, in the office this past week. But yet, here we're sitting here talking about, "We want to do this and that." We have 400 kids that aren't coming back to this building this year and we're turning away two people? Please don't ask me to vote for a levy if you're thinking about putting one on and I will do what I can to make sure that doesn't occur with any other senior citizens that are out there. If you're doing this to two kids that have been here their whole life, what are we doing with all the other ones? So it's just my appeal to you, if there's anything that you folk, not that, I'm not sure when people are knocking on our doors to get kids to come back here. You know that probably better than I, but as a resident of the city, as a grandparent, as a former board member, my daughter a teacher, my wife was a teacher, I think we have a lot of value in the system and we're being asked to take our two grandkids out. Something has to be done, not which is my two, but I'm sure there are others out there. They said because they're not in the system, they don't live here, they're the first ones to go, so we don't need you any longer. I think that, I leave that into your hands. Thank you.
Excuse me, do we have a question?
Yeah.
And we should probably have this conversation offline, but just out of curiosity, if they were saying that they've been absent more than 100 days of the school year, you did say more than 100 days?
They, well, they said, yeah.
Because they didn't, they didn't stretch.
We called and debated that every time we got his report card. These are wrong. They called and says, "We'll fix it." And we talked to the building principal, "We'll fix it, Mr. Glorioso, we'll take care of it." But yet, it's still on his permanent record. We kept asking this, the quite same question every report card that came out. Nothing was ever fixed.
So if we're assuming that they were absent 100 days based on their, them not swiping in, if you don't mind sharing, and you don't have to, but were their grades acceptable? Or did they pass or did they miss?
Yeah, Nathan's passed everything. His grades, his grades were, he was straight A's up until junior high. When he came to Lorain High, he didn't make the basketball team. He played basketball all of his life. He wasn't one of those, those fast kids. Nathan's 6'1", 280, so he's more of a football player than he's a basketball, but he's won the state championship three times in foul shooting contests. He's a great basketball player, could outshoot most of the kids on three-point shots, but he wasn't quick, so he wasn't picked. As soon as that happens, his grades went from A's and B's down to D's and C's. He has, we, he has, we have not been back to a basketball game here at Lorain High because he doesn't want to go back into that gym because that's where he's, he feels he failed and he can't face his friends who all made the team that he played with in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So he had, he had a real problem with that. So his grades have improved. Yeah, he passed every, every grade this year. He, he ended up with, I think, a 2.2 or 2.3 as far as his grade board average. Not what it was, but he doesn't have that same feeling about the school as he did when he was in junior high. And, and part of that was, was because of basketball and that shouldn't be. He's on the baseball team here and he plays for a travel team and we want him to come back here and play some more ball. He's a left-handed pitcher, he's a good ball player, but his grade, and Jalen's grades, the young one, his are all A's and B's.
So I'm just trying to correlate, if you're not in class 100 days, there's nowhere you're going to get A's and B's.
Right.
And the they that you spoke with never kind of correlated that together?
The exact number of days, the exact number of days you'd have to look on, on that, on that record sheet. I don't have those, but they were asked not to return because of their absenteeism.
Don't they have to tap in with their cards? They just tap, they have like a homeroom period, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
And you're saying, you're saying the card didn't work on the power school?
There are a number of them that didn't work because we called and reported that and they said, "Well, sometimes he does not tap in, but he's sitting in the classroom." So you can count that absent by the card not being used or you can count that present by him sitting in the chair with the teacher taking attendance. I mean, that's the way we used to do it, but I know they don't do that any longer. So if the teacher, and we would ask the teacher, you know, we, I went to parent conferences and I flat out ask her, "Was Nathan here every day?" "Well, of course he is. He sits in front of the room and I know he's here. Well, why is, why did we get a phone call this morning saying that he was absent?" "Well, that's power school and it's not working properly and we can't fix it as a teacher." That's what they're being told. So I'm not sure if it's happening to anybody else, but, but I do know that he was not asked to come back because of absent, not because of grades, but because of absenteeism.
I, I know you're not alone on this because I got several complaints from my daughter calling me and saying, they're calling and saying that my granddaughter isn't in school and yet, we know she's here. You know, her car's here. I come by to check and my wife works there and she visually seen her, so I think there is something, something wrong with the system, but it seems like they, don't they have a backup plan on this? I mean, like first period, wouldn't they take it by hand?
Yeah, I think most teachers do a old-school write the name back.
Yeah, the manual, yeah.
Correct.
As, as all of the teachers have done in, in the past before power school was adopted or however it became, you know, part of the system, but, you know, I know that he didn't use his card a number of times because he, when we get the phone call and I picked him up every night and said, "Nathan, they said you weren't in school. Did you go someplace after I dropped you off?" "No, Grandpa, I was in school. What are you, what are you talking about?" And he's a good kid in that regard, I know he was here. He said, "I didn't use my card or I lost my card, so then get a new one." Well, he got a new one and if he still didn't use it, it's still going to check him off, but I'm saying that, that, that don't we have a backup as you mentioned, Bill, to make sure that he's in that classroom? If he was gone that many days, as you said, Mr. Ballard, his grades wouldn't be there at all. No, he didn't fail any classes. He didn't get D's in any classes, so he's a decent student. He could be better, yes, but, you know, he's, he's 15, going to be 16 in a couple of weeks and, you know, he, that's just him. He didn't use his card often enough. So for that reason, he's being punished and said, "Get out."
I can, I can see the concern on this because they passed that House Bill 410 this year, which means, and they go by hours. Now, now it's done by, by hours, so if, if by chance he does get to come back, please impress on him that he needs to use his card.
Bill, that's a crock. It's when, when a student gets, and there's a ton of students, my wife's a registrar at Kent at Clearview. You've met her probably.
Yes, I have.
I hear about these all the time. Students getting notification that they're no longer going to be in the district for all kinds of crazy reasons. Kids who've been here since first grade. It's frequent, it's a different excuse, a different reason, but there's a consistency here. And to, to look at it in terms of the errors of power school or someone not doing whatever, there should be consequences for that, but this is not a consequence. And I think you have two children.
Yes.
Who've been asked not to come back.
Right.
Who've been students here since they were kindergarten.
Since kindergarten, right. Yeah, both have.
Yeah.
I know part of, one of the problems that he had also, and that I think they're going to correct it this year, was those, the days that they could, they only had to be here for two hours. Well, Nathan didn't want to come to school for two hours and then have me to come back and pick him up again a second time and bring him back home, so a number of him and his friends stayed home for those two hours, which they were, should be counted absent, but they, they should have fixed that before it began because it's counted all, it's counted against everyone, you know, when those kids aren't there and the teachers will, will back up on that, at least the ones I have spoken to saying, you know, "For, for two hours, these kids have to come to school, then you're going to release them again after two hours?" It was nuts, so, and, and, and defense or not defense of Nathan and that, in those regards, he probably didn't go on those two days. You know, "Hey, Grandpa, don't pick me up today because I don't have to be there. Why don't you have to be there? Because our teachers told us, 'Don't bother coming for two hours, these kids, we're not going to do anything anyway.'"
Wow.
For two hours. And, and he may have missed those days. I, you know, he may have called me and said that and I didn't go pick him up at 6:00 because that means I don't have to get up at 6:00 or 5:30, but, you know, that's, that's unexcusable as far as we were concerned as, as grandparents and as former teachers, but that's what the system did. On those days, the absenteeism rate went through the roof, if you would check those records on the days that they had that.
I've got to get my, I've got to move on.
Yes, sir.
Got to get myself educated a little bit. So when they come in at the beginning of the day, I'm going to send this to Ms. Cuthbert because she's a teacher in the, in the building.
Yes, I know.
Do they log in one time for the day and then that's, they can put their cards away or do they have to log in every class?
They log in when they come into the building and then every time they come into, like let's say they log in whichever door, I'm not down there, but I believe it's outside the gym area, cafeteria area, they, they tap in and then when they come to the room, they tap in again. So I don't know.
Per class or?
Every class they come in and they, they are to tap in.
So that's how you can accumulate 100 missed classes versus 100 missed days?
I don't know, but that could be, but.
So here's what we're going to do. I'm going to have some people look into that because I don't know what's happening at the school.
Sure.
And I don't know who the they is that you've been talking with, but I, I've asked Mr. Josh here to look into that with us, to find out what's going on in your particular case and then if there's a reasonable answer to this or solution to this, we will have someone get back in touch with you.
Appreciate it.
But I appreciate you coming to the mic and informing us of what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Cheryl DeFranco and I'm a 20-plus-year teacher here in the district and currently here at the high school. I have a short comment to kind of follow up Mr. Glorioso and then two quick questions. The comment is, the teachers have a box on their desks in their classrooms and many of them are, they just are kind of wonky and don't work all the time, so the attendance is not accurate a lot of the time. I know that parents have emailed and called me asking where their kids are. "They're here." "Well, we just got a phone call." It's, it's a school-wide problem with the technology, just to throw that out there. I also had a question about the 400, 500 students. Is that true, that 400 or 500 kids are not returning to our building in the fall? Is that a verified fact?
There is a large number, but you've got to keep in mind, it's, so we have, and I sent it over to actually everybody on the board to look at. There are certain dates throughout the summer that can affect this, depending on the time of the summer you take that, depending on, because we have a drop day within EMIS, so when we see that drop day, if we take it right after that, yeah, it's going to look like we're drastically short.
Okay.
But, yeah, as of right, or, I don't even want to say as of right now because I haven't looked probably in the past week to see how we're trending now, but yeah, it's, it's not abnormal where we're at, student-wise, but yeah, we are losing students.
That's a big, that's a big number. That's like a graduating class plus additional, so that, I was just shocked because I heard that several times.
That's the same number I've heard as well, but I've not verified that either.
Okay. The other question I had was, so I know that we're, we're under a moratorium and we're sort of like in hover mode right now, so what, is there a timeline? Is there like a, a hard date that you've, anyone has been given as far as when the Senate or the House or whoever is going to make a decision on what is going to happen here as far as local control, as far as the A D C, et cetera? Does, does anyone know or are we just kind of floating out there in space?
We're just kind of floating out there in space. It's the most accurate number, but what I was told from my state center, that he talked to leadership and leadership guaranteed him that over the next 30 days, they were going to take action on House Bill 154 with additional tweaks to it. So that's, now you know everything that I know, well, what's going on down at the State House? 154, which was what came out of the House, 83 to 12, the Senate didn't have a bill at all.
Okay.
They've, they've told their members that they're going to take 154 up with some adjustments to it, but they haven't shared all those adjustments. And they did say that, that would happen within the next 30 days after the bill was accepted, 166.
Okay.
That's my best answer.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hello, Barbie Washington Riverside Drive. Also with the attendance issues, my daughter, same thing. She has multiple absences and tardies in power school, but I check on my phone to make sure she's here. I know we've talked about it before, there was a faux literacy night that they used for the new House Bill for attendance where they made parents come if your students had missed a certain number of hours at that point and numerous parents disputed, so they were able to go in, I did speak to a couple of parents and talk to their teachers to verify that they really did not miss that many days. So there is, there is an issue and they're aware of the issue. The other question is, has anyone heard about our report cards yet? At the high school, we still do not have a final report card and the K8 grades are still for many people incorrect and they still have missing grades.
I've not heard any additional from, from the last time you made us aware of that. Have you heard anything, Steve, over there at school?
I don't know either.
So no, I've not heard anything on the final report card grades at this point.
All right.
I'm going to punt that one to you as well. If you can give me an answer, I would greatly appreciate it over that.
Thank you.
I will have an answer at the next meeting.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'd like to ask, is there anyone that is missing so many days because of the technology that they're getting to difficulty into trying to get into college or get a scholarship? That's what I'm worried about, that they get to that point and then that becomes an issue because they're not here.
Sure.
Please.
I guess my other question with attendance, are, is, are we reporting those numbers from power school? And if so, does that mess with our money and count and all of that? That would be another concern.
It's, yeah, that's, as we've talked through this, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, that does concern me as well and it's something I will look into for sure. That's, it was kind of my, my fear that not only as we're doing report card, like looking at hitting different, you know, the achievement, closing the gap, things like that, making sure that that information is not only, you know, that we're doing what we need to do on the front end to do those things, but also that the information is being relayed correctly into the EMIS system, that it's then pushed to the state to make sure that we are, everything's accurate, because I mean, that can, that has ripple effects far beyond just classroom, it has funding, I mean, everything. It affects everything, so it is definitely something I will look into.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further from the public?
Bambi Dylan. Now, I would think, I'm shocked that you did not know that was going on. You're a chief, you're a major player in this organization and for you not to know that, because with them telling students not to come back, I would think that would do something to your budget.
Oh, of course. If they're telling people not to come back, yeah, we're losing.
Right.
You're losing money.
This is amazing to me that something this important is not discussed at a major meeting with all the chiefs together and say, "We have a problem." And then once they see that there's so many students with so many hours against them, I would think that would trigger that there's a problem, especially when you have Mr. Glorioso coming up. I just have one question. Who signed your letter? Who's in charge of that kind of stuff at the school?
That's what I said, I don't know who lives there.
No, I'm asking Josh.
Okay.
I, I would think if it's somebody, if they're saying that the student is being asked not to come back, it would probably have to come through the school's office, so it'd be probably the chief of schools, I would think.
I'm just amazed that this is happening like this because to me, when you're in, it's a business and you have major decisions, and I know with me working, when I worked, we, our board of directors, they had meetings about this when major decisions were made and I would hope that this kind of stuff would stop.
I, I know what I've been doing from my end of it is, so I requested that EMIS come into my office because of my concern about this, not directly with the technology piece, but just the information being reported correctly overall.
Correct.
And it was something that I wanted to make sure I had a handle on and control over, so by bringing EMIS into my office, I've been sitting down with our new EMIS coordinator and going through this. She's also going through, she's getting training with somebody who has, you know, 30-plus years experience in EMIS. So we're trying to make sure that information gets correct. The problem that I have with this is this is on, on the whole other end of things. So we're looking to make sure like the information we have, is there anything that really sticks out and is there a red flag that we can then go back and challenge? But if something like this is going on, it, it brings up a whole nother issue because there's not anything that's really going to flag that when we're going through that information. So it's, it's, it could be an even deeper problem.
Yeah, I think it's a very serious situation.
It is.
That your treasurer doesn't even know you're losing students and they're being told not to come back when we're trying to get people to come to our school system. So out of the four, like you're, you said like they're saying like 400 students. What kind of money is that? How many millions?
Next question.
Yeah, it's millions of dollars and then plus, like, I don't blame Mr. Glorioso for having that opinion of not wanting to vote for a levy when his kids are good kids and getting kicked out of a school district, because that's what's being done to them. So then you're going to not only lose those kids, you're going to lose the money from the levy.
Agreed.
So what's that going to do for your five-year forecast is down the tubes? It's like really what you're showing us is really useless.
And it's, would you?
And I feel bad because you work hard.
Teacher evaluations are contingent on attendance.
Yes, that, I just feel that that's ridiculous.
And I do track, I don't want it to seem like I don't track student enrollment. I'm looking at it from two different segments now because I'm looking at it before it's entered into the EMIS system, but then I'm also looking at it when we get our, our payment vouchers to see what numbers they're reporting. And of course, there's always a lag in between those.
Right.
So it's not that I'm not following that. I just, based on the timing of certain dates throughout the summer, I don't get overly excited. Now, if we get into August and we're still seeing 300, 400 reported, absolutely. That would be my, my time that I would be seriously concerned, just due to registration and everything else.
I, you know, I've dealt with the school levy for what, 10, 12 years and I've always said this, that we never really go and find out why students are leaving.
I agree.
And sometimes it's just for minor issues that could be rectified and maybe we wouldn't lose these students, so to me, it would be worth it, the different kind of monies we're spending, to have somebody track these losses of students, to find out where they're going and why, so we can improve.
And exit interview.
I agree.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Courtney Nazario, I just have a quick question. I heard you say a new EMIS coordinator. Is that a new position?
No.
So we've had that position?
We had it, yeah.
How many new positions are in administration this year? Would you know of hand, how many new positions? I mean, because last year we had a lot, like 30 or more than 30 last year?
New positions, there shouldn't be any within the buildings. There shouldn't, off the top of my head, I can think of two new positions and they're coordinate, two coordinators within the people office.
And so they're probably what, about $100,000 positions?
Um, with benefits and everything, yeah, you're probably talking 85, 90,000, somewhere in there.
Okay, so that's adding to the money, more money that we are losing. And how many open vacant positions are there right now?
That I don't know.
Between administrators and.
And teachers.
Teachers and support staff.
That I don't know because they are right in the middle of hiring in regards to replacing administrators. Teachers, I don't know where they're at on that either because this, this is like hiring month.
Right.
So to give you any kind of a, an idea, it would probably be, it's probably wrong because it's probably from, you know, who knows when. But it, it varies based on open positions and things like that.
I mean, are there more about it this time than there were, say, last year or the year before?
Open positions-wise, and I think I've brought this up in the past, it's the amount of teachers, and it's been brought up, the amount of teachers we're losing, I don't know that we're losing any more teachers than we normally do. I think it's more the timing of it, that it's so late. We normally have a decent amount between retirements and just people resigning and leaving. We normally have, you know, probably anywhere from like 35 to 60 teachers that we're, we're trying to replace and fill and that the, we have the staffing pool that comes into that. Normally, we see a lot of those or we're at least notified about those prior to the staffing pool going in, going into play.
Right, right.
And we're getting a lot more of those after, so I think.
So like by that time school starts, we'd be able to have a number of how many teachers have left? How many?
Oh, yeah.
And how many administrators have left? I mean, there's quite a few administrators have left this year.
Yes.
More than I think administrators don't as often as this year, but we'll be able, once school starts, we'll be able to have a number?
Oh, yeah.
And will we be able to have a number also of how many students have left? At what point do we know for sure?
I don't, I wouldn't answer that one so clearly because you couldn't tell us how many students have left the district three months ago.
I can give you, I can give you what the report is, but yeah.
That's what I'm saying, like as I'm hearing this stuff to look into it further, yeah, it'd be something I would want to look into further. So like we can look into the day one of school, August 21st, I want to know how many kids are not coming back?
Yep.
So we'll be able to have that by then. How many teachers didn't come back that we had to hire new? And how many administrators? That's the day we would be able to get that information.
There's a cutoff date, isn't there? Isn't it, Josh? All right. Isn't it like July 7th?
For teachers?
July 10th, I believe.
Yeah, the date. So I mean...
That is, the cutoff date is whether or not, we, we don't have to release them out of their contract at that point. But from what am I, from what I'm seeing, I don't know that they're holding anybody to their contracts after that date.
Wow.
So that, that's, that's all that data is.
So you're saying they can still leave?
They can still leave. They have to request to leave at that point. They can't just put in that they're resigning. They don't have to let them out of their contract after that date.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
So about a week ago, David Hardy and I had this very conversation and he forwarded me, um, a document and I, and this may be helpful, may not be helpful, whatever. But, okay, so LEA resignations and retirements for this year was 41.
Seems about right.
All right. And so, but total membership is 596. Last year, same LEA, 40, total membership, 553. And the year previous, 2016, 17, 27 resignations and retirements, and there were 505 members. So now he also gave me LAA, which I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Administrator.
Okay. So 2016, 2017, it was four. Same for 17, 18, and same for this year. So I don't know if that is...
And that's, if, if that was last week, I know we've had a few since. So, yeah, we've, administrators at least.
Just kind of give some context about what you're talking about.
And that's, that's just, the majority of those in the past, the majority of those in the past always happened prior to the pool when it comes to teachers.
So Mr. Sturgill says that's impossible.
Well, it has to be impossible, Josh. I mean, we, we added deans. I mean, you, we added the deans. There was like two or three people added to each school. Okay? At least two.
Well, it's, it's one to two depending on the school because some of the schools did have assistants, assistant principals.
Yeah, we did. We had five or six.
Yeah, six. So half the elementarys had them.
When Gray was here, we had substitutes and they would go, okay, so I know.
One to two per, per building.
I, I understand that, but the, the numbers, the way the numbers, I mean, they're impossible.
Well, she said three years ago it was 505 and last year it was 596. That's about a 101 swing, if that helps you with your numbers.
Wasn't it the number of administrators?
That's the number of administrators.
That didn't change?
Okay.
That did change.
Got it. Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that information.
The other piece, Patty, is, is there's that differentiation. So they categorized it, um, resignations and retirements.
Right.
When you break that down, that's what we don't.
Exactly. And that was what we asked. And there was somebody who did, who pulled this data together for, for Mr. Hardy and her, her mom passed. And so I don't know who that is, Josh, and who had a death in the family. So she couldn't go back and break that out further because we asked that.
Because that's that, understanding I'm gonna, I'm gonna retire.
Correct.
The resignation number.
Totally different.
So you put those two together and say the sum total.
Right. But this is, this is what we knew at that point.
Thank you.
Does that say that the teachers actually grew? We have more teachers?
Yeah. So LEA was 505 in 16, 17, 17, 18, 553, and this year, 596.
I didn't think we had that many teachers. I thought it was 454.
Yeah, I thought it was in the 400s.
So I don't know where that.
I, I don't know either.
Because that's the number from the LEA perspective that, I mean, 474?
Yeah.
So it's definitely not 596.
I wonder if they're adding.
Don't wonder, man. Don't wonder.
Well, it's not wondering. I know where my number is. I guess I'm wondering where that number came from because it didn't come from my office. So that's why I'm, I'm saying.
Somebody, and I wish I, I remember the gal's name, but I just remembered that her mom.
Have to be Barb Bowen. She's, she's the EMIS person, right?
It wouldn't have came there.
Is that your office?
It would've came, it would've came through me then.
Yeah.
It didn't come from there.
So I'm sorry.
Do we have anything, do we have anything further from the public, please? Anything further from the public? Seeing none? We will go on to our next portion. I need a motion to suspend the order of the agenda.
My motion to suspend the order. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
So now we need a motion to go into executive session, correct?
Yep.
Need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
For items A1 and two.
For items one, A1 and two, employment and appointment.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
So we will go into executive session. We shouldn't be any longer than 15 or 20 minutes. We'll be back out to finish up the meeting and there will be action when we come back out. Thank you. And by, and by the way, as we're going into executive session, I would say that we had a visitor that slipped in after we'd gotten started and it's Ms. Lisa Woods from District Five. And she is one of those down at the Ohio Department of Education that worked really, really, really super hard in the beginning to point out the flaws of House Bill 70 with us and what was going on. And I really appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. Thank you so much for being here. We'll be right back out. Thank you. So we need a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
So, next we're going to discuss our nomination for our new board member. So I don't know if you guys have read the paper, if you guys saw all of the people that did apply, but we had a total of five that applied. All great community people. Um, as the board has gone over the resumes and applications and the process, it's came down to one that was pretty much unanimous. And I guess we need a motion to...
We need to nominate first.
We need, we need a motion, we need a nomination?
Just a nomination, yeah. So open the floor for nominations.
I would say, make a motion to open the floor for nominations for the replacement of Mr. Jamaki, a new appointment to the Lorraine City School Board of Education.
I nominate Courtney Allison Nazario to be on the Board of Education.
Second.
We just need to close the motion.
Any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? Need a motion to close?
Motion to close nominations.
Need a second on that?
Second.
A second it? Roll call.
We actually don't need to do that. We just need to move into, now we vote on Courtney.
So we need a nomination for Courtney?
Well, we don't need, yeah, just a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
So the winner is, it's gonna be the winner is? Very good.
Does he swear or hand now?
Yeah.
So the board has approved. So you need her to come forth for swearing? You'll take her? Could you please come forward?
Raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as board member of the Board of Education in the Lorraine City Schools District, Lorraine County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office until your successor is elected and qualified.
Congratulations. Actually, to join us here at the table.
I pulled on a chair for you.
Thank you.
Y'all welcome our newest board member. And I sincerely want to thank everyone that did put in an application. And as you know, she's finishing out a term and this term ends at the end of December. And anyone who's interested, there's still time to go and pull petitions and run for this open seat, um, at the first part of the, I think the, August 6th is the deadline, uh, and the election is November 7th, I believe.
So if you're interested in that, you'd want to contact the Lorraine County Board of Elections and they can walk you through that and give you some advice on eligibility and the process. But I'd recommend you do that sooner rather than later because the deadline is August the 6th to do that.
So where's all your stuff at this time? Oh, there it comes. Is there any old business, guys? Consider of approval of the July 16 special meeting minutes? We need, we need someone to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion to approve minutes from last meeting?
Support. Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Nazario?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Old business? Is there anything in old business? Recommendations of the treasurer?
I have none at this time.
You don't have anything going on?
Not unless you have something for me.
Do you have anything from the CEO?
I do not.
And so we did have a, um, we did send a letter inviting the entire ADC and they all really wanted to be here, but we were trying to work out a situation so their meeting would be a legitimate meeting along with our meetings. And so hopefully in the near future, we will be able to have that joint meeting together. And we also sent out an invitation for the CEO to come because we were going to discuss further what was going on with our levy. Um, and we did not get a response on that.
Can I just say that Michelle and Diane did want to be here, but because of legal situations, thought it was best enough to hear. So Patty is here.
We can travel in pairs.
Yes. We, we travel the same way. And, and, and we will be working on a joint meeting in the very near future. And I will gladly say that the relationship between the two boards is coming full circle. And I really do appreciate that. Thank you, guys, for working better for our kids and working toward the same goal, the kids of our, our district. You have anything further from that? Alrighty. No updates from the CEO, no levy, committee reports. We got a second hearing of the public.
Yes.
Please.
Can I use the microphone here?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you. Is it on? Okay. First of all, congratulations, Ms. Nazario. And the reason why I'm speaking tonight, I really wasn't going to have anything directly or directly to say, but I am so upset and appalled about what I've heard. That's what I'm saying in terms of these children. You know, I've worked with Ms. Glorioso, Yehai, for a number of years, years ago in the classroom. I've volunteered with her and worked for a number of years. And to hear what is going on in terms of the attendance and how parents out there are being treated when they are concerned or grandparents are concerned about what's happening within these schools with our children. And as I've said to all of you, my concern is about these kids and if they're getting the services and resources and the proper education that they need. But it's appalling to me that something like this would happen and a parent called in and no one seems to know who is in charge of attendance and how everything is supposed to be worked out. Once you know and that teacher has confirmed that that child is in the classroom, that is ridiculous and it's appalling. Yes, I can understand what Mr. Glorioso and others are saying about the levy. You can throw it down the drain now. This is terrible. And it hurt, you don't know how this hurts me. And you all don't, and you know, I've been here, well, how many years? And, and concerned about these kids. Now, this is ridiculous. And the foremost, and Ms. Nazario, you're here, it's about our children. It's about the kids and their needs and the resources and services that we need for our young people who are coming to school daily traumatized by whatever is going on in their little lives. And it's up to us as a community to see that this does not happen and is proper. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Anything additional from the public? Okay, seeing none? Mrs. Woods, did you have anything that you'd like to say? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you so, again, thank you for attending and for all your help and all that you do. Thank you so much. Um, our next board meeting is scheduled for August 13th at 5:00. Um, and I know we didn't discuss much of the levy talk here, um, because there's no change in the action at this point. And if anything does happen in the very near future, we may end up very well having to call an emergency meeting to do any of the business that needs to be done. So we will be on alert for that. Now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Motion's, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.